We have men.
I just didn't know his name.
What are you doing?
Goes and volunteers at the food pantry area.
Yeah.
Yeah, we sure need to get that on our agenda next week for the burn van again. Because the governor's gonna fall off. If not time, it's ours now, the one. So we better, we'll have to extend ours.
I got rain ordered something.
Well, your little lake.
We're gonna need an ark.
It's on backwater.
We're gonna need an ark when my rain gets here.
I finally come to.
Guy told me the other day, he said, "Guys, I don't know what, I've been praying for rain." And I said, "You know what kind of a Christian you are, don't you?"
That's where I'm beginning.
Landon and Jessica's fault. The last measurable rain we had was the day before their wedding.
How long ago was that?
That was September 2nd. So September 1st, we had two inches of rain. That night.
Well, you need to tell them to get a divorce and remarriage.
No, I'm not going through that wedding again.
Maybe that would work. Have another wedding.
No.
Washed all three of my cars.
Not having that wedding again.
I gave up on that.
I had a solution.
I ran out of quarters.
Jessica reminded me of that. I'm like going.
Get in the yard.
That was the last. We had some sprinkles since then.
I'd go do that. I drive on these city streets and it would probably be enough. I'd have to kick back down.
Didn't realize it had been that long.
Yeah, it didn't take much. Like you said, I'm driving around, it's all covered again. I was doing my part. If you wash a car, it's supposed to rain.
I was supposed to wash my car Sunday. No, Saturday. I couldn't tell. Forgot to wash my car.
Yeah, I really don't know how they came up with that 68 days.
I can't figure it out. She just kind of went. Here. I just didn't want you guys to be sad about that.
No. I saw that because I read March season about weekly. Barco. So I read his, you know.
All favorite.
All right. Call this. I slap.
Will you please?
Finally put theirs on. Sign your rights. Wipe away everything.
Yes, sir.
I missed a long time, but I did it.
Oh, yeah. Well, one of them. The one I heard. It's basically. So that's true. It's a bad start.
Supposed to be the separation of power. Did you go do your meeting and meeting with other people? I did mine the day before.
No, no. The federal wants to.
Since I was there, I said, "I'm here." You want to be here. There wasn't nothing to it. That's surprising. I knew we could talk. They really didn't do much for us. They wanted to go to St. Louis. I was over there, no sign to check. I said, "I'm going down there with you, Bart Bolz." Where does it go? No, since driving back to eat it tomorrow morning. I haven't been in convention all a long time. I looked around. I think I looked around. That was called. I just left the four flights of stairs.
End of the elevator. I could climb the stairs. When I come off the elevator, I'll, "Oh, find those stairs."
We come in the west side.
South side.
So how's our exit port?
William, the Lord Council, we're moving for tomorrow. I know that the president has eyes on Slatter. He might come out because of just having surgery.
Right.
Twenty eight.
There's a special one for Friday.
You're talking twenty eight.
That's interesting.
We'd have to have some kind of moisture to your eyes.
Yeah, but he just had surgery, so he probably doesn't want to take the chances.
It's sort of been, it hasn't been real steady for a while anyhow, so. Are you all right?
I will be.
Well, if you say me, go doctor, I'll take you to doctor. Been pretty good at taking people to doctor lately. And I was one of them. Thought about dying.
Go down to candy store and get your bottle of liquors.
That's what I mean. I've been eating a lot of liquors.
Yep.
Really, liquors?
Liquors.
Bottle of liquors.
It doesn't matter if it's bread or strawberry.
Ninety and guard written and square written, you won't know what you're saying.
That's true.
I second that.
Who first did it, I'm sorry?
Nobody did that. I'm making a motion.
Like a man, my ears must be blocked.
I wanted to see if you were aware.
Is your ear better?
Oh, maybe.
They are.
It did too.
They are better.
My play often.
There are four.
I should take the medicine too.
Are you? That's good.
I don't like being sick.
It's not mine.
It's not my vocabulary.
The older we get, the worse it gets.
Sick all weekend, I woke up and there was a sink full of dishes on the floor.
Oh, I'm really sick now.
You know, the older we get, the worse it gets. I just can't wait till I get Jay's age.
You, the way you live, you may not make it.
You never will.
You may not make it, but you know that.
I probably won't make it the way I live.
I'm definitely called mom. Brings all babies.
Live forever.
There. They must, they must hold their babies.
All right. On the front page though, Mr. Threatens Other Commissioner.
Luckily, a lot of stuff's coming outside.
I was checking out.
Are you looking at it?
No, like, go ahead again.
And they have, where they have their pictures, we can record these.
I'll just, I can do some photoshopping. Think like it seems from Star Wars or something. Just put your faces on the people. Do my front page picture for the week.
I've been photoshopped in some places already I haven't been.
Commissioner's approved liquor. Thank you.
That can be construed a lot of ways.
Excuse me.
Major County, I think she's got a pretty good article, quite a little article in her paper. Fairview paper.
He sent me the same article.
He sent it.
Was it last week?
I can't remember when he ran it.
It just, it's just come this week, yes.
I'll have to check it out.
Looks like it, Major County and. Alphabell County paper. He likes to write a lot of article though, don't he?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
You could write, you could write me like two full pages worth. Basketball game and football, or one football game. I was like, you're gonna have to cut it out a little bit.
I know.
Got to the point where like.
Make most improved.
We can't get pictures.
All favorite guy. Monthly highway expenditures.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, well, when he was racing there, he'd write. I'm thinking, the race, I didn't see all that in the race.
He likes that stuff.
He likes to write that, yeah.
This is your election. Your, I mean, your resolution to whatever terms. You send it down here with the other papers.
I sent it down here for the papers. I sent it to Howard. Where?
Fairwood.
Oh, I, that was just to give you a copy of it. I have it right there. But as much as I'm careful.
You don't mind, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, T six, doesn't it? Make them most improved.
My second.
All favorite. Application of alcohol berry.
They got assigned two. Those are two there?
There's that one and then there's that one.
They got assigned two because I have to keep an original. She has to keep her original.
We're getting here a little bit closer. Just don't pass one, have to worry about that no more, will we?
If possible.
Yeah, he getting closer, isn't he?
Sure. We're getting, that's south of the county, it's on the bar party, in the bar.
The inmates?
Huh?
The inmates?
Yeah. Yeah, probably. They're probably having some race and chat. I guarantee it'll look, every time he'll look at that. Say, "We're getting closer."
That's exactly right. He studies that.
Yes, and then some of the appropriations. We're a dollar. Yeah. Why do we even do them, he says.
Makes you kind of want to just make a fake one and just.
We're, I've said that, we need to make a fake one out.
Just to have to bring like five thousand dollars.
Who need the motion? I got the motion.
I got second.
All favorite. Even old woman.
Oh, yeah, Harold Vick would come unglued if he had that one. He would get all excited. She played computer, not just like paperless. So it's all good.
On some notes, yes. On some notes, no.
Did you watch Cowboy Beak Kansas Saturday?
That's what makes me angry on a daily basis. Ring off the wall.
More trees now than I assumed. At Kansas, be Kansas, at Kansas.
No, I think it's very functional. I have issues with.
This is still good for it?
Um, of course.
I complain about other things.
It's done really good. First, um, three weeks.
We thought it was gonna take over instead of just.
Been a business. She had thirty-five hundred dollars worth of sales. She doing good?
Howard kind of needed that affordable. It's a shop for clothes.
She's gonna, she's got kids clothes coming in this week. She's gonna try doing a few kids clothes.
All of her cousins are trying to get her.
Yeah.
Try to get to a.
So I told her, I said.
Hey, let us model these with our kids.
Nothing else. Just buy the family clothes.
Well, so did they get there free or discounted or what?
We give it all away.
No.
And order a, you guys probably had them and I've thought about that. Do you guys have like fire extinguisher signs or anything like that? Can you get them?
Get them here.
I'll just order them off of Amazon. I checked every, um. Lombard.
Or just the signs, the stickers?
Called the fireplace.
Well, I called up there and there wasn't any answer. And, um. I remember who I talked to said that they didn't think that they had them in there. But they could order them.
I thought they only kept those things.
But I would have thought also, but I, I never get a hold of them.
Are you talking about the ones that you put on the walls? Like just to go down the.
Yeah, just have an arrow down.
Master's Cavalry, yes.
I just, yeah, I just ordered them from Amazon.
Yeah. I know we, yeah.
Then she had to have an exit sign. I looked for an exit sign and could find one at Walmart. And.
Look at their stars.
No C E.
I did not. They might have gone back there. They can't make them through individuals.
They wouldn't know.
I would know. So I just ordered them both off of Amazon. They're just bigger this week and she's supposed to have her, the fire market will come back and.
Talk about sign.
You laminate, don't you? She has to have, probably just a regular sheet.
Yeah, we can do up to seventy seven.
I might make it on a bigger one then. She has to have the, like fire, at least those numbers visible.
She have her sales tax posted?
Yeah, she's got it posted. We got, we framed it, pushed it in a frame.
You're gonna say, what, no blankets?
Do what?
I didn't have any blankets in.
Oh, did I not get black?
I was watching for a while and I couldn't.
I got everything out of order this time.
Okay.
I was trying to make sure I got other things in there and didn't want to forget.
Blankets here.
Yeah, there's paragraphs of blanket change in the sign. But not for, there's a share and paragraphs is all I have.
I haven't seen the blankets do three.
No, we have a batch of them. I got the beginning of the month stuff over. Change it up that way you guys.
I think District One cleaned out the whole barn up there.
Didn't have a start. She can give that to my garage.
Throw it out the street pretty easy.
Come to my garage too.
You know.
Brother thought it'd be a good idea to have a garage out of my house like two years ago. And there's still stuff in there.
The next thing that's coming is. Fire trucks and the ambulances are gonna have to be repainted. Or something to get rid of. Can you see that?
Yeah.
They're not gonna be able to just get rid of.
Close at the end of the, end of February.
Why do they gotta be repainted?
There, there are people buying them, filling them full of explosives and running them right into the middle crowds because they don't stop an ambulance. Blowing things up.
So how, how do you, mainly paying big X's on them or?
I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna make us do, but I guarantee it's coming, isn't it? I saw that on TV and I go, I know what's coming next.
Well. They don't matter to some people.
Was it that one? What does it do? Was it on the trailer that? We had sold at the C D auction and it was stolen and they called us because it still had.
An Alphabell County on it?
Alphabell County on it.
Now I'm seeing some boxes. Kevin, you're white.
What? I had been made a lot of.
I have been. I thought you meant, or blanket, blanket, like this.
Yeah. I didn't think so.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
I like to check those names and stuff. It tells you if your business owner here, if you already is looking for that. Yeah. What is it?
It's gonna, like, hide everywhere.
Two, five, eighteen.
Yes, you're right.
What did he do that for? That's better.
Well, I understand.
Almost doesn't know it. Don't know where it is, but they don't mean. Well, it is about time for the others to back.
I keep wondering when we're going to get our phones.
She's looking at the crowd like she's feeling.
Right. So how busy each house is?
I don't know.
It'll like realize it's the south line.
He's calling the win when he calls and he goes, "Thank you very much."
Station. Have you one? Sorry, I need to give him more time to go on.
We should be the whole time to do all ours.
Yeah, we can. They did or what?
All right. Just loading it.
He might. When he has the tire, have somebody come and take over it. Buddy's on it. Yeah, Jay, Jay stays down. Somewhere. Should be down to protein, dollar twenty-five.
So they hit from the state line all the way south. If I stay at the same county. If you really hit, it'd be the same. Oh, that drives me crazy. Because then if you sit farther or something to a different county.
Just I think you may.
But you do.
And I have like a little system to look at if it, that only goes to this side.
Then you can't allow them to.
How, then it's a whole nother system.
Black light. Now come and try to.
I prefer that here with the canvas line. I just don't even turn because I don't have a clue how that goes.
Yeah.
How it transposes.
You have a plan, man to man.
It does.
I guess they was trying to do hard. Of course, his whole family was there too. It makes a lot of difference.
Yeah.
Damn it, where you got God down there?
I'm scared to look. We take a coffee break and come back?
No, news live, Tony.
Yeah.
I'll show Jay's pile in the morning.
Oh, no, he is.
I don't know, he must have a stamp or something.
Yes, I've said that for so long.
I guess. I felt that coming. I got it.
Coming out all right, didn't it?
It did, buddy, it did.
A little of the screen back there.
I missed you too, didn't I?
It's on his back.
I hate it when you got your mouth on both hands for one of those cubs. Everybody look out.
Just sneeze on everybody. When it's cold.
That starts to move out a little bit.
You going?
Yep.
You say it's warm?
Yep.
Jean Berg told me if she was walking in Penn Square. In Penn Square Mall. Or sitting or whatever. A girl named Christina Walker walked right by, I didn't see her. Pretty hard.
That's a multiple.
You're all right.
I want to say.
Work that out to him. Energy transfer.
Yes, and she walked along by myself. She's not to me too a lot. Ended up, said, "Where did you go?" "Well, I'm going, I can't find her anywhere."
That's a multiple.
Oh, it's good. I think it's been three.
How long maybe all the.
After what happened. Gets it.
Put a miss for it. Okay.
Most of the guys on the building to make it. There's the problem.
What is two five?
Well, that's three.
Oh, yes. Take it once or a lot less. Get rid of it all.
There you go.
Get my spot it out.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
About through the floor. That'd be nice. Usually they walk in the hall, so it's usually. It's two five, right? He was giving all the church, church. That corner. Always want to pick up his car.
Nothing important.
Look, I turned mine down and rang. See what it is. Makes me people don't always have meetings. You go to church every Monday morning? Yeah, or Tuesday, every morning. Or Wednesday. Why? You have a meeting? Oh, you have so many meetings. Well, I think it's in the state statute, folks.
Trying to make it.
Does your mom have anything for the high line beat?
Two was working.
Tried everything. What's she doing? I think I said those are a hundred, a hundred and forty foot tall.
I'm going to fly over them.
Yeah, he will.
Better fly over them, I don't think you can fly through them.
Fly under them.
It's like, it's like that.
Your landing would be pretty quick.
Yeah, you land.
You could fly underneath them.
Sure makes the air stand up on the back of your day.
Seen a lot of them crop busters flying. High lines. Regular. Got a problem down there?
I found this one for county general.
Yeah.
There you go.
It doesn't matter if you have to wear them. We're both those representation.
My collar. I thought I'd call up and he says fly. It's two, five, wanna. Yeah, that's, that's pest control.
You gotta be careful doing that to get rid of Tony.
Pest control now. He come back to me and you're like, "I can brave." Can't you, Tony? I can brave. So what's wrong? He told me. I stand with you. Okay, I love to do it.
Yeah.
Fix the water leak.
Okay, it's pretty good.
Pretty good in hand, it's a.
It's got a long tail there.
Quite a tail. This is the sheriff. How many people got in jail now? That's my county, what? Sheriff, Sheriff's on the money in Someron County? Only two thousand. There's only two thousand people there, yeah.
I'm moving the cap, the blankets, a little second. I'm a favor.
Maybe don't wash them all.
Road guard permit, I've got one.
Got blankets?
We've got blankets here. We're on the blankets now.
Oh, the blanket, yeah.
These are all two.
Yeah.
Those are sheriff and very much who don't sign either one of those.
Sheriff and running yourself out of money, if you're saying? None at all. What's he been doing?
These gotta be signed over.
Uh, Toby, uh, yeah, Toby's got to sign them.
Toby, yeah.
Yeah, he signs the fairgrounds. And there's some sheriff ones on the bottom. Those are, he don't sign those.
You don't sign the sheriffs. Probably go and find us some money somewhere.
Got them all written down. There it is, Dad.
It's done, eh? That's what the girls tell me.
Yeah, yeah, right. They must be fine.
So, okay. These are all fairground?
Uh, those two are sheriffs.
Probably sounds like I am. Just who we're spending or not enough money coming in?
No, he just opened. I just spent all of his budget already. But won't stop. Not really upset with the county clerk when she refused to put the others on because there's no money to counter, so she refused to put them on. Yeah, see, that'd be a problem.
But he shouldn't overspend anyhow too, the, or whatever. I mean, I don't know. I don't know how the finances are out there.
They should be doing all right. They did raises.
They should be, they got a bunch in wind towers. They should be doing all right pretty quickly. This is still. Car, car cobwebs.
Now you're, after that, you're into sheriffs.
These two are sheriffs. Those three are.
Three, yeah.
All three are sheriffs.
We doing, did we do that on those? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye, aye. Now we're the road guards. We got one here for water on. Private land, private owner doing Burlington, off the real water.
Off the real water or on the real water?
Off the real, the real water for Burlington, Burlington, they should have gone to go. The town of Burlington.
Need motion?
Yeah.
I'll do this.
Second.
All in favor, aye, aye. Resolution for retail sale of alcoholic beverage by the individual drink or on premises. You said you wanted me to read this whole thing, huh?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You read whatever you want to.
Resolution authorizing calling and holding an election in the county of Alphabell. They will go on for the first submitting to the registered qualified electors said county. The question of whether the retail sale of alcoholic beverage by the individual drink or on premise consumption will be authorized within Alphabell County. Whereas, a new section of law to be codified by the Oklahoma State that section five ninety of time thirty-seven authorizes duly elected county commissioners of Alphabell County within state Oklahoma to call for an election on the issue of the sale by liquor by the individual drink in the county upon their own motion and whereas a statewide election is scheduled to be held within Alphabell County on June twenty-sixth, nine, two thousand eighteen and whereas allowing the electorate of Alphabell County to vote on the liquor by the individual drink issue at the same time as June twenty-sixth, two thousand election will result in substantial financial savings expense of a special action to resolve this issue. The Alphabell County Board of County Commissioners has deemed that the issue of liquor by the drink should be placed on the ballot for June twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen primary election to save the cost of special election to the taxpayers of Alphabell County. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Alphabell County Commissioners, they walk on with that. The chairman of the Board of Alphabell County Commissioners of said county be. And he or she is hereby authorized, she. I'm a he, not she.
No, we better.
Be authorized and directed to place on the ballot of election to be held in said county on the twenty-sixth of June, two thousand eighteen, purpose of permitting to the registered qualified voters of said county, the following proposal to win. Shall the resale, retail sale of alcoholic beverage by the individual drink for on premise consumption be allowed within Alphabell County of Oklahoma? And if approved, such retail sale will be allowed every day of the year.
Yeah, people watch that on camera now. They, they know, they're gonna know something though. It'd be surprising if people watched that.
You never read any of this the whole time you was doing it.
I did. I read that four H parking.
The last fair light up.
Didn't I? Well done.
Well done, Jane.
And they.
Thank you.
I'll make a list or whatever.
And, and this is just a proclamation that we've got signed and noted, so basically says the same thing.
Right.
I don't know.
Because we don't get to vote in June there and have a problem getting alcohol in this county.
Yep.
Well, I just don't.
Plus we, plus you, you need to, you need to have it.
It all needs to be signed by everyone.
Collect your tax on it. We need to keep the tax.
But.
In the county.
Yes, the sales tax from those.
In the county.
Well, and then there's safety too, because if someone can't buy it here, they're gonna drive to another county and then they'll be on the road.
They have him signed.
You have that to worry about too, people traveling to go wherever to get whatever they need.
There's another problem. Should be going around. Needs to pass by.
Needs signing too.
Yeah, I have to keep an original and Kelly needs an original.
I couldn't write that good when I was a kid. That's new. Not our gear to get.
Need a motion.
I'll make it.
Motion being made in second is what we accepted on February.
Me, I guess.
I didn't hear anything, sorry. Both of them?
That is it, yes.
Yeah, now if they don't pass it, I'll get a ticket, Kevin back with a drink and Alvin. I'll say, well, I tried.
I tried.
Still drink at home.
Yes, yeah, that's me.
Resolution for Fair Board of appointments.
Tom, um, Chase did not file.
Right.
But they recommended you guys, and they're back on there for district two.
They went off.
I did not ask him. I asked them. They said he wanted on. Or they was putting him on.
Oh, hills.
He was out of town.
I know.
Can't get along without him.
Who is this for?
Fair Board members.
Okay, so I need a copy of the list. Okay, so who goes off next year? Does anybody go off?
Yeah, Logan.
Make a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Circuitation of universal for security detention facility law for January and December.
This is December and January. Just has a J. The signature on there.
Is there anything left in that barn up there, Jay?
Huh?
Is there anything left in that barn up there?
That's what I said when I.
There are plenty left there, yeah, but that stuff that older than you are, Toby.
I'm pretty old.
I wanted to say that, but I'm a guy like him, I did.
No.
I don't, you gotta get signed under there or?
We just have to have one signature.
Yeah, come on.
Okay, there we go.
Need a motion for that?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll tell me.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Circuitation claim applied two thousand eighteen for January.
Yep, this one was January.
I don't say we've done, right? We done both?
No, we need to have the claim now.
Okay, you got the claim now.
We got to get one signature on there too. So move we accept it, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Should I go sign right here on all of these? There's the declarations.
They're all different.
Give them all at one?
Yep.
There's resolutions.
We ain't gonna do them all at a time.
Come on.
Unless you want to.
We could be here till four o'clock.
That's what I, that's what I do them all once and they can do whatever they want to in the paper.
Could you say, Jay, sign the center of those?
Oh.
Yeah.
Right here, okay. Got you. I'll transfer this stuff to Derek Terry if you want me to.
No, we already cleaned our barn out before.
They got plenty of room for it.
Uh, that's right.
You have a cross sign on it?
Toby took it home with him. We don't tell anybody.
What'd I do?
Took it all home with you. That's all right.
Okay, that's fine.
You disposed of it.
Look at the three hots in the car.
Can dish network.
Yeah, dish network too.
The company did we use when we upgraded that security deal here?
Um, security and I was the one that we did the first time and I don't remember who got the bid. The second time.
Our, our second went kaput up there.
Oh, no. Yeah, remind me when kind of the sign checks and all.
I need to, I forgot that.
Any some security up there?
It won't even come on. It won't do anything.
Any security up there?
We got it. We just will keep it, yeah.
Must have lots of thieves working for them.
Can't trust those people north and east of the river.
Oh, north and east the river?
Yeah.
That's you.
Not that. I was turkey. I'm south of the river.
I think they should have issued some machine guns for the city of Philadelphia last night, the way they door stepping up there.
I'm sure they tore a bunch up. I'm sure they tore a bunch up.
And indeed.
Should have done more than just breach the pole.
I didn't see it, but you know, I know.
The windows out in Macy's department store, the old self turns vehicles upside down.
Have you ever met an Eagles fan?
Huh?
Ever met an Eagles fan? Just curious, has any of y'all ever met an Eagles fan? They are something else. I know, I know one vividly. And he, oh my gosh.
I know since they went out there, they'd get wild and crazy up there in Philadelphia.
What else do they have to celebrate?
Huh?
They, they are pretty strong fans. Those Eagles fans. It is, I agree. It's a game. Yeah.
Somebody make some money off of it. Don't stop.
You could bet about. You bet about everything on the game. The coin toss, the, how long the, the national anthem is gonna be.
You can bet on everything, yeah. The farther you go northeast, the worse people get.
Just cross I thirty-five in Oklahoma and go to the party of the hood, you might be in it.
Yeah.
What I tell my son all the time. You're out here, we'll never come out of you finally.
Go lakes and east Oklahoma?
Copehan.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. Don't have to give a crap about that.
You need to. I do every day.
I know you do. Oh, yeah, Austin, because, you know, Philadelphia never won and had them all juiced up and everything else and drunk up. Oh, yeah, it probably had a lot of. Stores tore up and everything else. The thieves, but it was ready to get ready anyhow. Guess looking for an excuse. Probably torn the place up if they lost.
It's a whole different world. Been a few years.
I think they were there, but they didn't want.
Their first one, they would have won in the Super Bowl era. They won one before they started doing Super Bowl, the championship.
Philadelphia did?
This is their first actual Super Bowl.
I thought they said they never won one.
They won, I'm pretty sure they won one before.
It became.
Before. This present.
This is number fifty-two, right?
Yeah, so it would have been before that.
That's a long time.
So how, when was it? Nothing. Make a, make a. Yeah, make a motion approved, both of them.
I'll second it.
All of them?
All of them, yes. Good luck. You're gonna put that, I even want a paper on there. Yeah. I'll make your bill go a little higher.
Yeah. Be a big bill for the Cherokee publishing.
It's your fault.
What?
Big bill. I guess you put, list every one of these individually. The bill be big.
I don't care whether you do it or not. We can get Ingersoll to do it if he don't.
Ingersoll paper?
Yep.
You just, you sent the bill in all to district one, right?
Yeah.
Do you have your original?
No.
Of what?
Easy.
Oh, I don't have, that's not me.
Can we use that one?
Private profit easement through the southwest corner of nine twenty-five twelve. For hauling off concrete.
And, and don't put it on the former?
I wonder what that, that'd be worse than.
Get here? Yeah.
This mine, I mean, it's district two.
That's what I mean, district two.
Make a motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any unforeseen business? Move we turn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Add a little thing, David.